At this time, we will call to order the September 11, 2017 Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And we will have an invocation by Vice Chair Ronnie Reese. And you may sit or rise during invocation or participate at your choice. So at this time, if you choose to rise, please do so.
I'll pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the day and we just ask you protection and blessings upon us of the sinning and these storms that are going all around. I pray for those people that are in the path of it, for those that have already experienced the devastation and the loss, we pray for them. Pray especially for our blessings on our emergency services today and the sinning, EMS, EMT, and Police Department, Sheriff's Department, and fire departments, rescue, and all those who protect us every day, Highway Patrol. Ask your blessings on the decisions tonight that would make wise decisions that would move Alexander County forward with business and economics. Pray for a safe journey for each one back to their places of abode after our meeting tonight. And we give you thanks for all these things. Amen.
I recognize Jeff Peel for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Attention, salute, pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you would remain standing, please.
Oh. Freezing arms. Order arms. Going face. Mark.
May I be seated? We want to thank that was the presentation of colors by the Alexander County Emergency Services Honor Guard in remembrance of the victims of nine eleven. Thought that was fitting today. At this time, do any commissioners have a commissioner's report?
Mr. Chairman, I have just a couple of things. One thing we talked about before via health care, myself and Mr. French attended the meeting in Asheville on, I think it's August the 22nd. Anyway, their budget has been cut by about 175 million. This is for single stream funding. And what this is, is the state's behavioral care system, and this will be done over the next two years. Via Health, we had mentioned before, there's a crisis house in Lenore. This was built by Via Health Care where we can use that facility at Alexander County pretty much free of charge. The kiosk, we talked about at last meeting, it's out at the Health Department. That was done by them too. So a lot of good things that they're doing and, you know, just a lot of cuts there. But Via Health also, they're looking at prioritizing services with less money to the people with the highest needs and those who have no insurance coverage to pay for things. But, you know, what this will do is just kind of make it increase, you know, people using emergency room and, you know, different types of care and really inappropriate incarcerations, you know, for jails and, you know, those things. But that's something that, you know, we need to keep thinking of and keep in mind. And also, the EMS 50th anniversary, I was able to attend that. That was pretty interesting to know in 50 years where we came from, pretty much the hearse at the funeral home was what was used, you know. So they had a heads up already when they come and picked you up if you didn't make it. So Seth Chapman, if anybody knows him, he was there and he was doing some talking and he made it real interesting for what was going on. And also, the Sheriff's Department, I know probably the guys in the back wouldn't want to, they did split shifts. If a call came in and the ambulance or rescue squad was already gone out, somebody at the Sheriff's Department actually got into a vehicle to go out and, you know, handle that call. So I think Mr. Chapman said the first day he was involved in one of those. So, but it was pretty interesting to me and I really appreciate what the EMS and all those people were doing and thank them for their service.
Ronnie, I always wondered why. My dad used to tell me my great uncle drove an ambulance for Bass Smith Funeral Home. And I never understood that, but I guess that makes sense.
Is anybody else, gentlemen? Okay, here are no other. At this time, I'd accept a motion to adoption of the agenda with one change, number five and number six. We'll recognize Ryan Mayberry and Josh Lael for that presentation. With that change, do I?
Make a motion to approve with the changes.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Likewise, if you're against. Okay, at this time, we have our public comment section, and we have two people signed up for public comment. And I'll quickly read the rules of public comment. And some of you, this is not your first time, so, but the public comment is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizens' comments and concerns. It's not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Length of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes, and if you have more than one group speaking about the same thing, just elect one spokesperson. Clerk Jamie Starnes keeps the time, so you can watch her and she can give you signals as you get close to the three-minute time limit. Comments are to be directed at the Board as a whole and not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concern. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda item. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment, shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting and have their names placed on the list. And tonight, we have Alicia Addington, FOL Book Sale. Is Alicia here? Okay, come right up to the podium, please, Alicia.
Hi, as you said, I'm Alicia Addington. I'm with the Friends of the Library, and I want to invite all the community members to our annual book sale. It's going to be at 153 Commercial Park Avenue in Taylorsville. It will be held Wednesday, October 4th, from 1:00 to 6:00. That is for members only. Thursday, October 5th, from 9:00 to 6:00. Friday, oh, sorry, that was October 5th. Friday, October 6th, from 9:00 to 6:00, and Saturday, October 7th, from 9:00 to 1:00. And I just want to say a thank you to Bill Miller, who is our head books sorter, and Gail Clary and Jenny Masters, who are helpers in the book sorting. And if anybody is not a member of the Friends, you can always pick up a member form at the library, or they will be for sale at the book sale.
And that's right behind us, correct?
That is right behind you, yes.
Just for those that, it's directly behind this building.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, I'll recognize Judy K. Wood for Bethlehem Day.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners, Mr. French, and Ms. Starnes. I am Judy K. Wood, and I'm with the Bethlehem Community Development Association, and I'd like to invite everyone to come out to the Eighth Annual Bethlehem Day this Saturday, September 16th, at 10:00 a.m., from 10:00 to 4:00. The festival is held at the crossroads of Ringdam Road, Hubbard Road, and Shiloh Church Road. The event is free to the public, and there's no charge for admission, no charge for parking, and we even have children's inflatables and entertainment areas that are all free. There will be more than 60 craft vendors with local foods and food trucks participating in the event. The festival will start with the troupe 527 Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts presenting the colors and leading in the Pledge of Allegiance at 9:55. We have a great variety of local talent lined up this year. We've got five groups performing musical events. At 10 o'clock, right after the Pledge of Allegiance, we start off with Sticks and Stones. At 11 o'clock, we have the Suzuki School. At 12 noon, we have New Horizons Fiddle Group. At 1:00 p.m., we have Zeppro Woodwind's Group. And at 2:00, we have Dave Privet and Friends. There will also be a Classic Car Cruise-In, which is open to all models and makes, and that will be a nice highlight that will be in the Shiloh Church parking lot from noon until 4:00. We do ask the classic cars to enter on Shiloh Church Road at the 127 Bridge. So the Bethlehem Community Development Association is proud to present this free event to the public and thank our sponsors. Our sponsors' banners are on display in Bethlehem, and we encourage everyone to give a big thank you for making this event possible. Again, the date is Saturday, this Saturday, September 16th, and we ask everyone to come out, and we have a wonderful weather forecast of sunny and 82 degrees. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. John Pilkington, Director of Planning and Development. And I guess we need a motion to go into public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into public hearing.
Okay. Motion second. Is there any discussion concerning the motion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Okay, John.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and Boards. Tonight, we have a public hearing scheduled for rezoning case 17-2. The applicants are Barry and Jeannie Stewart. They are requesting that the property they own, located at 34 Mount Wesley Church Road, be rezoned from its current RA 20 to, actually, it's two parcels of land, let me say, both of them to be rezoned from the current RA 20 to highway commercial. This particular piece of property, these two parcels are located there at the intersection of Millersville Road and Mount Wesley Church Road. I'm sure most of you all are familiar with it. The request is so that they can actually expand from just doing auto repair to doing car sales and continue with auto service on the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission met in August and unanimously recommended that this property be rezoned. As noted in the discussion, the rezoning request is not consistent with the 2008 Conference of Plan, which identifies the area as designated for residential use. Rezoning this parcel would make the zoning inconsistent with adjoining parcels and would be inconsistent with growth patterns in the area. However, the building and its operation had been in place prior to the adoption of countywide zoning in September of 2001, and rezoning the property would actually allow the business to continue to operate as well as expand in the future. And staff recommendation noting that concern was that the rezoning request be approved for that reason. Not, obviously not knowing, and I don't think any of you were serving on the Board in '01, it's very possible, and I know that the Council of Governments worked with the county to redo or rewrite the zoning ordinance during that time, that the zoning, it just may have been overlooked to not zone it commercial because it's been, the building's been there since 1992. Mr. and Mrs. Stewart have been operating it since 2002. But with that said, staff recommended approval of it, and as noted, the Planning Commission met on July 27th and was unanimous in their recommendation in asking the commissioners to rezon both parcels of land from the current RA 20 to highway commercial.
Any questions, gentlemen? I know that sometimes I know if you do a commercial appraisal and the zoning doesn't match, sometimes that can cause issues in the appraisal process.
I do get phone calls a lot of times with appraisers. I have to send them an email or a signed letter stating that the property is being used as commercial and has been used for commercial and is allowed to continue as a grandfathered non-conforming use. That's typically how I have to handle that. In this case, because Mr. Stewart wants to obtain his dealer's license, the DMB requires a letter from the county stating that the property is zoned for commercial use and would allow him to have a dealer's license and operate a dealership on that property.
Yeah, I'm familiar with that property, and if somebody would ask me, I'd probably say that probably is already zoned that way, but...
I've, you know, driven past it numerous times and always wondered, you know, but never really gave any thought to it until Mr. Stewart actually applied for the rezoning, not realizing it wasn't zoned commercial.
Since this is public comment, are any questions from the audience? You're certainly privy to ask if you feel inclined. Any more questions from commissioners? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion of that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. So at this time, I guess we need to entertain a motion to accept the zoning request if someone feels inclined.
Make a motion to approve zoning case 17-2.
Okay, have a motion, do we?
Hang on a second. We need to list the...
You need to give back to staff recommendation and...
Okay. Make a motion to approve rezoning case 17-2 in accordance with the staff and planning board's unanimous recommendation for rezoning this property.
Read off number one.
Okay. Property, also as this property has been operated as a commercial business prior to adoption of countywide zoning, at the time of the adoption of countywide consideration should have been given to the zoning of the property for commercial use. Make that as a motion.
All right, now we have the motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? All those in favor of the motion approval, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. So at this time, I guess we need to entertain a motion to accept the zoning request if someone feels inclined.
Make a motion to approve zoning case 17-2.
Okay, have a motion, do we?
Hang on a second. We need to list the...
You need to give back to staff recommendation and...
Okay. Make a motion to approve rezoning case 17-2 in accordance with the staff and planning board's unanimous recommendation for rezoning this property.
Read off number one.
Okay. Property, also as this property has been operated as a commercial business prior to adoption of countywide zoning, at the time of the adoption of countywide consideration should have been given to the zoning of the property for commercial use. Make that as a motion.
All right, now we have the motion. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? All those in favor of the motion approval, please raise your right hand. Opposed, likewise. Thank you, John. At this time, I would like to recognize Laura Crooks, Library Director, and the recommendation of the naming of Alexander County Library History Room and Alexander County Library Local History Policy. Thank you, Laura.
It's a mouthful. Thank you very much. At the meeting on August 14th, 2017, the Alexander County Library Board of Trustees passed a motion to recommend to the county commissioners that the current Library History Room be named in memory of Opal Watts Harrington. The Library Board recommends that the room be named the Opal Watts Harrington Local History Room in recognition of Ms. Harrington's lifelong commitment to preserving the Alexander County history. We appreciate your consideration for this recommendation. That's the recommendation part.
Do you also want to do the...
Local history policy?
Yeah, or do you want to do these separately? Is there a preference, Rick?
No, sir.
Okay.
Let's just put them together.
Okay.
If you want to go ahead, Laura.
Okay. Well, the history policy was also reviewed by the Library Board and recommended for approval this evening. The major update being that in keeping in compliance with the North Carolina Administrative Code regarding receipt of state aid, the history room primarily is used for the purpose of local history and genealogy research. Other acceptable uses including small meetings, quiet study as needed by patrons or library programs. The room is open to the public, and food and drinks are still not permitted, and the room may not be reserved. So those are the major changes in it. Otherwise, it's open for school.
Any questions? I believe you're on the Library Board. You might be able to glean a little bit.
I served on that committee, and I attended that meeting, and it was, you know, pretty much unanimous, and I think what had happened prior, just kind of a little bit of confusion on those parts, but everyone came together with that, and, you know, just as it states here in the policy updates, all those are good. And, you know, we can't, at a public library, you can't really restrict, you know, someone coming in and using that room, but they do monitor, you know, what's going on.
Right. We keep account of folks that go in and folks that come out. It keeps our numbers so we know how it's, how the usage is.
And I know this too, it's an inner room in the library. It's not something you just come in from the outside and really go in.
Right.
Somebody sees who's going in and out.
Yeah, it keeps that balance of keeping the collection, the historical collection, safe and giving people the opportunity to use the collection and use the room.
And if you were to prohibit, then you could lose funding or have the possibility of losing funding, correct?
Right, right.
From the state. Okay. And again, I appreciate you going through the Board and the Board, Library Board bringing this recommendation because that's the way it should go, should come from you guys, from that Board first. So I very much appreciate them bringing this to us and you being the messenger.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the naming of the local history room in the Alexander County Library in, as the Opal Watts Harrington Local History Room, and we also approve the Alexander County Library Local History Policy as it was presented.
Okay. You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Is there any discussion of this motion?
I'll just say that I know we've had a lot of discussions about this, and we need to use this in rare and very, very rare instances of honoring someone by renaming a building or a room or whatever it may be after someone. And we just need to be very sparing in what we do. We appreciate the fact that everybody wants to honor someone for their service, but we need to use it very sparingly. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I've had my reservations about it just because it can cause a lot of friction and between different people saying, well, that person's, you know, they shouldn't be honored for that, or this person did more, or whatever the case may be. So we need to use it sparingly.
Understood. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed, likewise. Good motion carries. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Rick French for the broadband feasibility study recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to call along Greg Kronk, but just in your package you have the minutes from the broadband committee meetings that gives the recommendation on the feasibility study. Staff has been meeting on this and discussing this in great detail. Mr. Kronk, who's our IT Director, has talked with our attorney, and I'd like to turn it over to him to make the presentation. Greg?
Thank you, Ms. French. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk with you, gentlemen, ladies, for a few minutes this evening. I want to talk a little bit in general about what our broadband project is, it entails and involves. I know two of you sit on that committee and appreciate all your help with that, but I know the others do not, so I thought I'd give a real quick overview of what is it we're doing. Our broadband committee, well, it so happens, we began this process a year from tomorrow, or tomorrow it'll be a year. You formed a broadband committee, and there are a number of representatives from the schools, the local businesses, community members, and other agencies serving on that. And what, why did we form that? That was to look to improve the broadband service for the underserved areas of Alexander County. Now, we have worked exclusively with the state broadband office. They have staff there, and this is what they're doing. In fact, they are working with 32 other counties to do this very thing. We are not in this boat alone, and we have leaned very heavily on them for their expertise in this matter. So the first phase, and you probably saw this, was our countywide broadband assessment survey that determined the areas of the county that are underserved. You saw a lot of this in the paper, our media. It was a survey we conducted on the website. It ran from April 1st to May 31st of this year. We also utilized paper copies at our libraries, our convenience sites, other public buildings. We did media blitzes about this. I'm sure people got tired of hearing about it. We did social media advertising. We also sent copies home to all of our schoolchildren with the help of our local school system, and we appreciate their help. We received 1,954 surveys, total surveys. After we removed the duplicates and the incomplete surveys, we had about 1,769 usable surveys. Now, when I look at the U.S. Census data in 2016, it says we have about 16,180 households in Alexander County. That's a return rate of about 12%. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start looking at external surveys, anywhere from 10% to 15% is a good return. I mean, you're not going to get, nobody gets 100%. We're just not going to do that. I will tell you that according to the North Carolina Broadband Office, we had the second highest return rate. So we did very well, and we're very pleased and we're very happy with the folks that took time to fill that out and submit that to us. I wanted to give you a couple of interesting and key stats from those surveys. 62% of the folks that returned a survey said they had kids in their house. We know that the internet is very important for curriculum these days, and so that's important. 84% said they were already purchasing internet. So we've always known that a large percentage of the population has access to broadband. It may not be what the FCC determines broadband is, 25 meg's down and 3 meg's up, but they did have access to that. Now, we know we have some areas that do not. Of the rest, 65% stated they had, nothing was available to them. So those are going to be our areas that don't have anything. Of those with internet, now this is a key stat, of those that have internet, 50% said it was not adequate to meet their need. So that's a key stat to me. And speed was the overall reason. They felt it was too slow. Now, another key factor is that 83% of those responded to the question that said if additional broadband services were offered in your area, would you be interested? And 83% said they would. So that's part one. Do the assessment, find out where your underserved areas are. Part two is coming up. That is a provider meeting. We are working with the state broadband office to host a meeting of all current providers in the county and all prospective providers, anybody that's interested in providing service. We will give them the results of the broadband survey, various facility locations, towers, things like that, that might be beneficial to them to assist in providing services. Okay? We have not set that date. We will set that date towards the end of October, the 1st of November, and we were working with the state broadband office to do that. So the third part of this project is what we're termed the broadband assessment feasibility study. This is the RFP, the Request for Proposals, that the county posted and solicited companies to bid on. As you're aware, the county had $10,000 from ARC grant funding to put to this. The county does have to match that, at least match that. So I want to tell you about the study's purpose, what it really, what we needed this to do. It's an assessment of the broadband services in Alexander County to identify and evaluate service and/or adoption gaps. That's number one. Now, the county probably is not in a financial position to pay and build fiber throughout the county, but there are all kinds of state and federal grants that we, as a public agency, might be able to leverage that might come into play into some sort of public-private partnership. This RFP is the business analysis for that, that's what this is. It specifically talks about last mile coverage. Last mile is the, the last mile to that house to get service to that house, that's the focus. Let me see if, what else here? It talked about recur, looking for potential one-time and recurring third-party funding sources, and develop that plan that would enable Alexander County and its commercial partners to take advantage of these opportunities in conjunction with broadband-friendly public development, so. We did release that RFP, we received seven responses to that, and a wide range of prices, from $164,862 to $20,000. So, it was a quite, quite a wide range. County staff met with Keith Conover, he is our representative from the North Carolina State Broadband Office, and we selected the lowest three bidders. We looked at them from experience, knowledge of the North Carolina regulations, because we feel that's important in North Carolina. We operate under some unique constraints as a city and county in the state of North Carolina with, when it comes to broadband. Did they respond to the RFP and what we were looking for? Do they have a proven track record, and have they done this business analysis before? And we also looked at their references. So, we did, at the recommendation of Keith Conover from the State Broadband Office, eliminate two items from our, our, our bid, and that, that's our, that's our right to do. And he suggested we do that for two reasons. One is that they did not, in the other counties, they were doing this process, they did not feel that that was useful. And the second piece of that is, one of them was a gap analysis and the other was a regulation assessment, he felt that the broadband office could do that for free for us, so, you know, no sense in paying if you can get it for free, so. But we did eliminate it from every proposal, not any, any particular one. We had a meeting of our, staff met, we met with Keith Conover, he made some suggestions to us, he is not able to, to recommend a, a provider to us, that's up to us to decide. Staff met with a, the broadband committee on, I think it was the 21st of August, and the broadband committee discussed this and looked at all three bidders, and I can tell you that of the three, one of them was primarily a middle mile, a proposal. And a middle mile is, is, it doesn't actually provide service, but it is the loop, it's the backbone that your last mile providers need to, to get access to the citizens. The difficulty with the middle mile is that most people that provide service want to own that middle mile, they don't want to lease it. So, we were, we didn't really like that proposal as well as some of the others. The, the other issue with that is, they had only, they had only done this particular project in one other place, and it was not located in North Carolina, so. Second bidder had great, great amount of experience. Unfortunately, they had done nothing in North Carolina, nor had they done any, anything out on the East Coast, so we were a little concerned about them not being aware of our particularly unique legislative restrictions, so. The, the one bidder, the, that, that the staff liked and was recommended to the broadband committee for approval, had, it's, it's open broadband LLC. Both of the principals for that, that LLC have 20-plus years' experience in this. One was the former Director of Broadband and Infrastructure for the Fiberant, which was the city of Salisbury's Fiber to the Home Project. They are also actively doing this same analysis and study with Wayne County, City of Belmont, Stanley County, Chatham County, and Town of Wake, Town of Chapel Hill, on all very similar projects. Additionally, we felt that they probably had the best understanding of our legislative regulations within the county, within the state. So, we, again, we presented this, these, this recommendation to the Alexander County Broadband Committee on August 21st, 2017. We had a lot of discussion, we heard some input from Keith Conover, and the board voted, that committee voted unanimously to recommend to this board that we award the, the RFP to broadband, for the broadband assessment feasibility study to open broadband LLC. The total cost for that would be $24,500, and I am open to take any questions you may have.
So many questions?
As of, as of right now, there's, there is $10,000 in grant funds, so the $24,500 Alexander County would actually be responsible for the matching of the 10 plus the difference. Is that correct?
We already have an ARC grant for the 10, I believe we have already done a budget amendment for 10 of that, and I believe that tonight you have a budget amendment on your agenda for the 4, 4, $4,500.
But yeah, I mean, yeah, basically what I was saying though is, I mean, county, county money, we would, we would only, we would be at $14,500.
That's right, that's correct.
Right.
Greg?
A couple of questions. What, what role did the committee play in this, like, did they read the RFPs and, or they, how did that process work?
Okay, that process, we had a, a staff committee also that consisted, not, not only myself, I mean, I, I mean, there, there was myself and, and Ms. French, and we had a number of other individuals that read all of those proposals. We did not present all seven of those to the broadband committee, but what we did do was bring to that committee a, an outline and highlight of each of the, each of the three lowest one, lowest bidders to be considered. I mean, I think staff felt that, you know, because of the broad cost estimates, you know, it might not be really worthwhile to bring, to bring the one for $164,000 for them to look at. So, I think the staff met with those and, and, and tried to summarize all of that, because each of these is about 15 pages long or so.
Now, will this system, like, where I live, I, I function off of a Verizon service. Will this system run off of towers and be wireless, or will it be fiber, or will, how will it work?
Well, that, that's the key thing, I mean, there, we're not proposing a system, I mean, what, what we're doing is a process to, to try to meet with, well, first of all, we did, we did our assessment, then we're gonna bring our providers in, and we're gonna, and the potential providers, and give them that. As a third option, the county can elect to take this business analysis, I mean, it's not up to us to design systems, I mean, we're not in that business. But you could, should this, should this elected body elect to do it, could solicit some public grant funding to then partner with another provider, and it would be up to the provider to, to engineer said, that said system, so.
So, the awardee of the RFP is not engineering anything?
No, we're not engineering anything.
Okay.
It's not up to us to engineer, but theoretically, let's say we have a provider that's in, and there are several, you've probably heard of Skyline Skybest, you've heard of Yadtail, some of these providers are to our north, they do do fiber to the home, and, and I'll be honest with you, there is some interest from a lot of different providers. I cannot say that those two are interested, but I can tell you there are several, several that would be. And let's say, I know for a fact that, that Yadtail worked with some, some public, with public boards to look for public grant opportunities, and that public, maybe, maybe their boards applied for those grants and the match was provided by the private sector, so.
And certainly sorry for all the questions, but, but the, and I'm a little slow, I guess, but what exactly will open broadband, what's their next step? What will they, they'll start gathering these people together then, or?
No, their step is to do the business analysis for us. I mean, that's what they're, they're going to come in and look at the resources that are here, the opportunities that exist, and hopefully present this body, this board back with, with an idea of, should you choose to do this, this is what you could offer, and this is the business case that you could make to solicit that partner.
So, would that be a combination of towers?
Could be.
It could be a combination of many different things.
Could be a number of things.
Yeah, what this is, is just a study, so that if we decide we want to go into a public-private partnership, we've got, you know, I'm not gonna say any actual roads because then it'll start some sort of.
[laughing]
If, if Acme Road out in Vash Thai has no service, and it's, there's a lot of houses on that road, and it looks like a good place for a, a company to want to start service to homes, so we could go into a public-private partnership with Acme Telephone Company to, you know, try to leverage grant money to provide access to broadband for those homes. Hopefully, what will happen is that companies on their own will see that we have areas that need service, and they will work out through their own business and their own resources and capital to, to deploy that capital to bring service to those homes.
We, this is a part that we have to do, though, we do, this is a part of that three-step process.
It's gotta be done, yeah.
It doesn't obligate this board into that.
When, when we first, when this was first brought up and we first, you know, it was, I guess I said presented, presented to us because it, I mean, definitely wasn't one of our ideas. Basically, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are other areas in, you know, in the state of North Carolina, counties, municipalities and whatnot, that have been able to, and I'm fast-forwarding through the process, but make, be appealing enough to some smaller, essentially internet providers, or, you know, or system, I don't wanna say internet providers, that's not correct, but there's, there are some, some counties and towns and such in this, in the state of North Carolina that have fiber optic, you know, fiber optic cable to 99% of the households. And, you know, we're not talking about Wake County and Mecklenburg County, we're talking about rural counties. And that's what I think piqued our interest, because, I mean, absolutely, if you have children, you know how much, I mean, sure, there's Facebook and Snapchat and all those, but more than that, you know, once they get a little older, I don't know how they do their homework without internet, I mean, without internet, honestly, because my, my kids use it every single night. And they're, you know, and there are obviously places in Alexander County that with, with no legitimate high-speed access, your house. You know, and we, and I mean, in my family, we live, we live in a neighborhood, I mean, I'll say this, I mean, whatever, but through the phone company, their DSL, you know, the phone company, the fastest wing gets three megs, because we're in, we're near the end of the line, we're near the end of the, you know, we're too far from the, what you wanna call it. Okay, well, they're not gonna do anything about that, they don't care. You know, well, thankfully, we do have option, we do have another option through cable company, but, you know, everybody doesn't have those options, and, and so that, that's what we're trying, I think that's where we hope to get to, is that there be a situation that it's, you know, it's not, hey, Alexander County, spending a ton of money to do this, we're trying to essentially make Alexander County look good and show that there's a need where there's another, where there's a company out there, or multiple companies out there that would be interested in running the backbone system and actually running, you know, the wiring to the homes to, you know, to make it possible.
And the reason that we started this, and we actually started this more than a year ago, if you remember, the committee started a year ago, but we, James Fortner, who has been instrumental in pushing this thing forward, he, he's helped us a lot, we've not always agreed on everything, but that's the way committees work and things get done, but he's been very helpful with this, and, but the, the main reasons that we're looking at this is, how do we get more service to more Alexander County citizens for our children's education and for the businesses that are located in this county? Also, the small businesses, the, you know, the ones that are run out of the home, the real estate agents, you know, whatever they may be, that we've got access to broadband for those people so that they can make a living.
And one of the other factors of it is too, it puts competitive pressure, because if somebody's coming and looking to run it, they're not gonna just look at the underserved, they're gonna try to own the market, and that will put pressure on the existing providers, both for quality of service and pricing. I think it's kind of where this thing could end up going, and for the consumer, you have more choices, which is what you want.
This is simply a study and may or may not have any impact with anything after this study's done, it's just a part of the process that you have to do.
It is.
Okay, gentlemen, any other?
Thank you, Greg.
Any other questions, Jeff?
No, sir, I'm good.
And I will echo that Mr. Fortner's energy in this project has been, was critical when we were starting out, because he was lighting up the phone, calling, saying, hey, we need to do this. And I think he's a, a real estate appraiser by trade and lives up in the Sugarloaf, north of Sugarloaf, which there is very minimal, he can't do continuing education, things of that nature. We have a lot of people that work from home, you know, the person that bought my house last year, they actually work from home, and one of the reasons they were moving from out in Ellendale to town was to work from home, the connectivity, and I never would have thought that would have been a reason to buy a house, but.
Well, I think, just my part, we, we see that there is a need and people are interested in it, so, you know, it is money, as Mr. Lael has mentioned, but when you look at the return that we'll be getting, you know, and the availability for our citizens, you know, if you don't have it, and I've been in those areas where there's nothing, some places you have to drive a long distance, you know, just to get to where you can get a signal, not just in Alexander County, but other places I work in western North Carolina, so I think it'll be a, a good plus for Alexander County and get the competition, you know, competition helps and everything to, you know, kind of lower some pricing too, so.
And Keith Conover with the state is outstanding from what I've observed so far, he is. Yes, he is, he's been invaluable for us. So, I think we've, the state has a very good resource in that, that they've allowed us to utilize.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Hearing none, I guess I'd entertain a motion if someone feels so inclined.
Or a budget amendment?
That'd be later.
That'd be later, yeah.
No, maybe. Oh. So, I guess we need to accept open broadband, okay?
It's a recommendation, yeah.
Oh, yes.
That's where I was going with that.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that Alexander County proceed with open broadband LLC to complete the broadband feasibility studies.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion prior to voting? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand, opposed likewise, motion carries.
Thank you.
Greg, thanks for your work. Okay, at this time, we've got the engineering recommendation for state project loan for water, and this'll kind of be a combination between Mr. Commissioner Mayberry, perhaps Commissioner Lael, and perhaps County Manager Rick French, so Commissioner Mayberry, I think you've been very involved in this.
I wish I could get that here a little earlier, but it's been a busy day. The, we've got, and this is another engineering study, we've seen to have a lot of those lately. The, Alexander County received a loan for water and sewer expansion, and so, one of the first things that we have to do for that is have an engineering report done for both for the water and an engineering report done for the sewer. And correct me if I'm wrong, it's December the 1st is when the deadline is, is when that has to be. that has to be.
Preliminary engineering report.
Preliminary engineering report has to be done.
And Commissioner Mayberry, if you don't mind, just to clarify that, the, the next step being the next step required for us to get the loan, you know, for us to get the money, not for us to have the pipes in the ground.
Right.
We've kind of been pre-approved for some of this funding subject.
Right, and, and like I say, at this point, at, at this point, it, this is a, this is a deadline step in the process to, to actually receive the loan funds or the, you know.
It could be as much as two years before we actually have pipes going in the ground. So this is going to be a long drawn-out process. It, it, nothing happens quickly. We, when, well, we received, I think it was eight?
Eight.
Eight different requests for qualifications, RFQs. We went through those. Some were, do you want to talk more about? We, we received, like the broadband committee, a, a big selection of different companies. So we reduced that down to two and interviewed both of those, I guess both of them were last week, wasn't it? Commissioner Lael, myself, County Engineer Darrell Robertson, and County Manager Rick French. And we met with McGill Engineering and, I'm sorry, McGill and Associates Engineering. And that was earlier in the week. And then on Friday, we met with Shabaldine Engineering, who is working with McKim and Creed out of Charlotte. Did that Friday in Bethlehem. And I tell you, both, both companies are well-respected. I have, I've known Mr. Shabaldine for a long time and we've worked with McGill and Associates here for many, many years, I guess since, what, 2002, is that what you?
Yes, that's correct.
So.
And, Mr. Mayberry, I was just going to say, board members, if, I mean, and I don't, you know, right now, I guess if you want to, but I did bring the request for qualifications that both groups submitted, one for water, one for sewer from each, if you'd like to, you know, if you'd like to look at them. Like I say, both, in Ryan and my opinion, are very, you know, are very qualified, as were some of the others.
And again, if you may recall, we formed a task force and appointed Commissioner Mayberry and Commissioner Lael due to their real estate experiences, builders, developers, et cetera, felt like they were the most appropriate persons, along with County Manager Rick French and Engineer Darrell Robertson, to represent us and to bring back recommendations. So that's just a little history on how these two gentlemen.
Thank you for telling that. Left that out. Anything you want to add about our meetings before we go on?
Well, I mean, one thing, one thing I would say, it's just a kind of general statement, is, you know, before I was a county commissioner, I didn't know what a request for qualifications was. And, and to, to break it down for those of us that don't necessarily speak local governmentese, which is kind of a language, you know, a request for qualification is essentially a, hey, give us your resume. Show us that you're big enough and you're smart enough and you're good enough to do the project that we are talking about doing. And basically, at this point, what we're, I mean, what we're looking to do, what we're looking at is the, is that first step for, that first step toward the loan, you know, the loan process. At this point, you know, the locations of expansions and where things are going to go are still, are still very undecided. You know, we don't know at this point how many linear feet of water line we can do or how many linear feet of sewer line we can do. We don't know, you know, and all that depends. I mean, there are, you know, numerous variables that determine those things because we have a certain amount of money. But like I say, this is, both these firms, you know, so it's, so I, I feel for, you know, I feel, I feel for everybody that submitted something because I haven't applied for many jobs in my life, but I didn't, you know, I didn't really enjoy it, you know, filling out resume and, and doing all that kind of stuff, which is essentially what they've done. Like I say, both, both firms are very qualified. And we still have, I guess, through this, this process, this process of water system expansions and sewer system expansions, you know, this is a 500 meter, 500 meter hurdles and we, this is jumping hurdle number two. So we got about 480 more meters of, of hurdles to jump.
Would you, gentlemen, like, are you going to bring a recommendation?
Well, what I would like to do, and I'm going to throw a wrench into everything here.
Okay.
I've got a couple more questions that I want to make sure that are answered before we proceed with this.
Water and sewer?
Yes. And I believe that we are allowed to have a phone meeting where we can actually vote on this as a conference call. And I would like to do that tomorrow. The reason is, is we're up against such a deadline. But I want to make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and all our Is dotted. Normally, I'd say, let's just move it off to the next meeting, but.
Right. December's coming.
We don't have, we don't have the, the, you know, extra time to be able to do that. Can we do that tomorrow and maybe set that up for 12 o'clock noon for everyone? And I guess, Micah, you could be on that conference call as well, if you'd want to do that.
I can do it at 12, it's fairly brief.
Pretty quick.
So at this point.
Can't play golf tomorrow.
Wish I were. So Mr. French, can you coordinate that, the conference call number, and I guess we would table item five and item six at this time?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, this is the Bethlehem project that we're talking about.
Well, it's the water project, which is.
The water, yeah, the water projects, we suspect will involve several, I mean, several areas. And.
In this study, this, these guys will kind of tell us.
Right, I mean, there's, there's some, like I say, there, I mean, there's some, what will work and what won't work still be determined, which will determine somewhat as to where it can go.
Yeah, some of it's on the lake, some of it's on Tinktown, some of it's north of Highway 90.
Right.
The sewer project is all located in Bethlehem.
And, and like, you know, and like Commissioner Mayberry said, that the areas that we've looked at to this point are, are the areas that, that the county sees as the areas with the most need and that it would be most beneficial. But like I say, we don't know exactly how much, you know, that we can do, or, you know, we may be able to do a little more, we may be able to, may not be able to do quite as much, just have to see.
Rick, do we need a motion to table this or we still?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would be, I'd accept a motion to table agenda items five, which is engineering recommendation for state project loan for water. And then also six, engineering recommendation for state project loan for sewer. So any preference, can we do them together or do we need to do it separate?
You can do it together.
Well, let's do it together, so. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we table items, agenda items number five and agenda, agenda item number six.
Okay.
Until we can reconvene via telephone.
12 o'clock noon tomorrow.
All right, I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about that motion? And we will get that conference call, call in number four, we leave tonight, correct?
Probably not, we'll have to take a little bit of time in the morning to set that up.
Okay.
See, there's proof we need better technology.
Yeah.
If we have connectivity.
We need better, yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion to table these two items? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Okay, all right. Moving along, agenda item number seven, Board of Commissioners to relinquish authority of the Alexander County Veterans Committee. That sounds bad, but I'll let you explain it, Rick.
The Veterans Committee wants to become a 501(c)(3) organization so that anyone that makes a donation, they can provide a receipt, they can claim it on their taxes. In order to do that, they need to, us to relinquish authority or unappoint the members of the current Alexander County Veterans Committee. So that will, that's, this is coming from the Veterans Committee for us to take this action. So again, we would just be unappointing them or relinquishing, they would be relinquishing the authority, they would no longer be a Alexander County Veterans Committee. We would still work with them, but this allows them to pursue a 501(c)(3).
Allows them the flex, flexibility for fundraising and those that contribute to tax status, correct?
They want to break free of the county's tyrannical control.
That's it. So the board that's currently there would be replaced with.
Or dissolved.
Probably their own people.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And there's a, there's a good deal, I'm on that board, there's a, a good deal of fundraising that takes place and a lot of donations and it would be a much smoother piece to have the nonprofit status. Phil, so the donations will certainly increase with that. There is no, no issue or problem being a county agency or a county committee, the only issue is just being able to accept donations and be tax deductible. That's, that's driving the boat. They do a lot of great things for a lot of people.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the veterans' request as stated.
Okay, have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, about two seconds, that equals.
Two square.
All those in favor, or is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, one question I'll ask, the Veterans Committee, I mean, does the county, does the county help fund the Veterans Committee at this, I mean, is there anything that goes on now that, that they, that they might lose out on by doing this? Okay, I was just, but, just, just wondered if they're, I didn't think so, but I'm asking.
Any other questions?
There's, there's a, Veterans Services and Veterans.
Right.
Committee are, even though Ginger is heavily involved in both, are two separate pieces. So the, you know, the Veterans Services will still, I presume there'll be no change in that, and the Veterans Commission will be, and, you know, it coordinates the veterans' events and, and works in conjunction with the VFW and the DAV and those guys. So I think, I think it's going to be a good thing.
Good deal.
Okay, any final discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Those opposed likewise. Okay, at this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Mayberry for Constitution Day and Citizen Day Proclamation for Constitution Week 2017.
This is, I'm just going to read this entire proclamation. Constitution Day and Citizenship, uh, Citizenship Day Proclamation, Constitution Week 2017. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas, at the culmination of months of deliberation, debate and compromise, on September 17th, 1787, the Constitution of the United States of America was signed. And whereas, September 17th, 2017, marks the 230th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, even though, even through many amendments over the years, the Constitution's foundation has endured and it is the supreme law of our land. And whereas the Constitution, whereas Constitution Day and Citizenship Day are celebrated on 17th, September 17th each year during the celebration of Constitution Week, September 17th through September 23rd. And whereas, the adoption of the Constitution and the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or by naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Alexander County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 17th, 2017, as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. And September 17th through September 23rd, 2017, as Constitution Week and encourages governmental leaders, as well as leaders of civic, social and educational organizations, to conduct ceremonies and programs that bring together community members to reflect on the importance of active citizenship, recognize the enduring strength of our Constitution and reaffirm our commitment to the rights and obligations of citizenship in this great nation. Furthermore, the Board urges all citizens of Alexander County to reflect during this week on the many benefits of our federal constitution and responsibilities and privileges of American citizenship, adopted this 11th day of September, 2017. All right. And I'd like to make it, like I make a motion that we recognize those different dates in Alexander County.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion of this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appointments for tonight, jury commission, reappoint Harry Robertson for two years. Animal Control Advisory Board, reappoint Dr. Hannah Schaefer, Leanne Wisnig, Todd Jones, Dottie Ferguson, Mike Deal, Garrett Davis, and appoint Maggie Dolstrom for two years. The Western Piedmont Council of Government Region E Development Corporation, reappoint Milton Campbell for three years.
Okay, you've got the recommendation? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the committee and commission and board appointments as presented.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, that motion.
Okay, clerk, I'd like you, Jamie, I'm not going to vote for myself on number three. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. I'll choose myself for number three. Okay, at this time, County Manager number, Budget Ordinance Amendments, number seven through number 11, Rick French.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment number seven is to budget for labor materials to reclaim freon out of chiller, install new filter core dryers in chiller lines and recharge with new freon and add refrigerant oil, and that's at the courthouse. Budget Amendment number eight is to increase DSS budget for grant funds carried forward by NCDOT that are available to the county. In 2017, 2018 year, grant funds are used to provide transportation to the elderly, elderly to get to nutrition sites, doctor appointments, adult daycare and other transportation needs. Budget Amendment number nine is to increase budget, budget revenue to match the allocation for the Home and Community Care Block Grant for senior center operations. The required local match was already included in the senior center expense budget. General fund contingency is being increased to keep the county's budget in balance. Budget Amendment 10 is to adjust, to adjust the project budget for the revised cost estimates per the request for proposal process. Proposals were accepted through July 24th, 2017 and were discussed at the Broadband Committee meeting on August 21st, 2017. And number 11 is to increase the general fund local match for the Alexander County Broadband Study Project. Revised cost estimates resulted from the request for proposal process. Additional county funds are needed to supplement grant funding. The original county matching funds of $10,000 were transferred to the project budget, project fund in fiscal year 2017. The new sales tax article 44, 524. fund in fiscal year 2017. The new sales tax, Article 44, 524, that can be used for economic development, public education, and community college began in fiscal year 2017. The county match amount is being taken from the new sales tax that was received in fiscal year 2017. That's-
Any questions on those budget amendments?
Mr. French, just one question. Number seven.
Yes, sir.
Has that got it back functioning? I guess it-
Yes, sir. That's a Band-Aid.
Okay.
You could do that without pulling the unit out with a crane, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Great idea.
What's your HVAC sixty-fourty feet player?
How old, Mr. French, how old is that system?
I'm not sure. It's been, it was replaced once since I've been here. It's been at least 10 years ago.
I was just wondering, because it says Freon, and I know from, from my, my experience, we have, in my office building, we have five, we have five heat pumps, and about all of them are to the point that they need a pound or two of Freon, or this or that, about once a year. And if they are, the old style Freon, which is R22, it is very expensive now.
Just the old style Freon?
I mean, I mean, very expensive because, because they've stopped making it, and it's basically-
Illegal.
Yeah, and HVAC people charge, they kind of charge whatever they want to charge for. And, yeah, it is very expensive.
So hopefully, we get a little farther down the road until you have-
Which is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we've been doing this for eight years.
We kicked the can, well.
Any other questions about the budget amendments as presented? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve budget amendments number seven through 11 as stated.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on these budget amendments? Hearing none, all those in favor of budget amendments number seven through 11, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Okay, Mr. French, county sales tax revenue report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the closeout last fiscal year. We have collected $4,333,596.82 for regular sales tax for the county. We budgeted $4,422,000, so just a little bit short of that goal, but we are 4.7% ahead of the same time last year. With the new sales tax funds, we had budgeted $1 million and collected $1,352,019.40, so that's 135.20%. We have nothing to compare it since it's brand new, so.
Has there been any more noise about the new sales tax or changing that formula, or we feel like this may actually continue for-
So far, yes, sir, until it looks good so far.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions on that? All right, Mr. French, County Manager's report.
For sake of time, I've got a number of items in, in here in the report. A couple things, and to touch on what was discussed earlier. You have in your packet a copy of letter, of letters, that the letters, is, the subject is "Letter of Intent to Fund", and one of those is sewer collection line extension and pump station upgrade. And in that letter, it sets certain milestones. The first milestone is engineering reports middle, and that date is, we discussed, is December 1st. According to this letter-
They have six months to approve it.
According to this letter, when, if you go, then there's a second step is engineering report approval, then you have bid and design package middle, bid and design package approval, and then you have the actual advertising, the project receiving bids, submitting bid information, and receiving authority to award. And according to the information we have, that date is July 1st, 2019. So, and then you have that same information on the water, and that's just for information, but I think Commissioner Lael, Commissioner Mayberry mentioned that earlier.
So for the citizens' patience?
Yeah, it's going to, it's going to take some patience. That's, yes, sir. And other information is just for information purposes. And I have some, a couple things for closed session, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, now we can, to the consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda, gentlemen? Hearing none, all those in favor, approval of the consent agenda as presented, please raise your right hand. Likewise, against. Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment, and we will go into closed session. North Carolina General Statute 143, Day 31, 8.11A, 4, 5, and 6 Economic Development Contractual Personnel, and we will only reconvene for the purpose of adjournment only. So if somebody would like to make a motion?
I move that we go into closed session.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
All those in, any discussion of this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. All right, thank you.